Let the leaders testify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board had meeting an executive session to discuss personnel according to Indiana code at I T N. It's recommended that minutes of the board or the regular, sorry, public meeting of April fifteenth, twenty twenty five be approved with any additions, corrections, or deletions as recommended by the board. Motion by Bill, second by Christie, all in favor. Any public participation?
I've got a little public participation. Michelle, this is Bowley. This is Michelle Bowley. She is our elementary school. We're elementary school special education teachers and she's retired. You've been in Orleans for three years. Three years before that you went down to Warren. What did you do before that?
I was in that for five years and I was home with my children for fifteen years. And I was back there for eighteen years.
Michelle did a wonderful job with her, a special education kid. She has a very challenging job. So our students who might have some greater disabilities, but she's very patient with them. Does a wonderful job. We were very lucky to have her and we'll have somebody take her position, but I don't think anybody fill her shoes. Because we were really blessed to get her to work at Orleans for three years. We're definitely gonna miss her and I don't know if Mrs. Lori wants to add on anything to that or not.
She's been a wonderful asset to the school and brought a lot of things that we didn't even know existed and ideas. And I learned a lot from her myself, so she's a blessing. It's a pleasure being here.
Just a little small talk of our appreciation for your time here, much you did. Thank you very much. And you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we're not a hundred phones if you just stay.
He's already retired.
Thank you. Appreciate it. A little bit of other public participation as well.
And bringing by the warm report. And I just want to let you know that the breakfast cart and the lunch cart has been great. We had one thousand four hundred and sixty-one more meals in the month of April. And we're averaging close over fifty, you know, close to fifty. One day I had a record of fifty-nine breakfast. And they were averaging thirty-five over forty lunches during the lunch cart. But everything's going through. And lunch is a record. And then we had a pizza challenge at the elementary school and I think kids absolutely loved it. They did a workup job of advertising the pizza each month, I mean, well, each week. And they were all excited to know what flavor it was gonna be next, you know? And there's some things I want to change next time, you know, guess what, learn, you know? But other than that, you know, and there's more things that I could do that all the dream. And when I was obsessed with jogging and stuff, so.
I will say I got a lot of positive feedback about the breakfast cart and the gym and the lunch cart. Yeah, a lot of students really enjoyed that. Appreciate it. So that's been a plus.
Yeah.
Nice to see it helped our middle counts go up as well.
We get kids that don't wanna, they might have anxiety of crowds, you know? Kids that don't even eat lunch, never ate lunch before, you know? And then some kids just don't, you know, too lazy to go down there or something, you know? But other than that, yeah.
Thank you. What's the story of evening?
All right. It is recommended that the board approve account payable vouchers from April sixteenth through April thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and May first to May twentieth, twenty twenty five. Also to approve payroll claims from April twenty-fifth, May ninth, and to make payroll on May twenty-third and June sixth, twenty twenty five. Motion by Keith, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. To approve contractual bus drivers account payable for the above dates. Motion by Barry, second by Bill, all in favor, four zero one. Financial reports. The recurrent transfer from educational funds to operations fund to reimburse the operations fund from April twenty twenty five expense that are not allocated to student instruction and learning was made April thirtieth, twenty twenty five in the amount of seventy-six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars sixty-seven cents.
I don't have anything other than just passed around the summary sheet and then I'll send out the detailed sheet later this week if that's okay.
I question my curriculum materials. Do we get that payment once or twice a year? Or have it been here once a year?
And usually, so far it's been in December.
Is that the one fifty-eight you were talking about?
Yeah, first year.
And what, what day do they measure the student count?
They measure that first of October and the first of February.
So if that's a different, what do they base the payment off of?
They base the first part of the year on the October count and they adjust it if the February count was down. Am I correct on that?
Are you talking for curriculum materials?
I'm talking for A D M, just in general.
Oh, for A D M, it's adjusted each semester.
Each semester, yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious how it works.
Any other questions for Teresa?
Reservation. The following reservation is to be recorded in the minutes Mercedes Red as Special Education Teaching Assistant effective May eighth, twenty twenty five. Employment. It is recommended that the board approve the following coaches to be hired for the twenty twenty five, twenty-sixth school year. You see those are listed below and following the next page. Motion by Bill, second by Christie, all in favor, five zero. It is recommended that the board approve the following sponsors for the elementary school for the twenty twenty five, twenty-sixth school year. Again, listed below. Motion by Christie, second by Bill, or I'm sorry, Barry, all in favor, five zero. Budget preparation schedule. It is recommended that the board approve the budget preparation schedule as presented.
The only changes to the budget preparation schedule are the days that they follow. Yeah, so our days are board meets on order of on that. And then the other dates are by Indiana code. Certain things we have to have things submitted by and things done by, but there aren't any changes to the schedule from year to year.
Motion by Christie, second by Bill, all in favor, five zero. Health services coordinator is recommended that the board approve Sue Burton as a health service coordinator for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. Motion by Keith, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. Summer band. It is recommended that the board approve Terry Burton to teach the band classes during summer school for thirty days. Pay period for the master contract. Motion by Barry, second by Bill, all in favor, five zero. Summer athletics. It is recommended that the board approve the following individuals for the Orleans Junior Senior High School summer physical conditioning. Pay as listed. Those are listed below. Motion by Christie, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. Fabrication lab interns. It is recommended that the board approve Adeline Steele and Troy Dilly as a fabrication lab paid interns for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year up to five hours per week. As pay period of eleven dollars and seventy-five cents per hour.
I have a question. This process wise, how were they chosen? And I have the same question for the assistant, teaching assistants.
The fabrication lab interns were chosen by fabrication lab instructor. She interviewed kids.
So there was a, like, any kid was able to interview for that?
I don't really answer that question. Any kid, but she put out there, one of these Troy Dilly did for us last year, so that's.
That's fine. But same thing with the teaching assistants. Was that an open, anybody could apply for that?
That was a little more in depth. They, all those students were interested entering at the elementary school. Five, Mrs. Hall and the application process, the interview with Mrs. Lawyer. Then she, she was there to show.
Right. The reason I ask, this would be a very good opportunity to put kids through a normal hiring process. And so a formal interview and recommendations, you know, kind of thing. I think that would be a good thing. So I'm curious as to how that.
At the elementary school, that was the normal hiring process.
Yeah, good. And any kid was allowed to?
Any kid, yeah.
With whatever the qualifications were, yeah.
It'd be a senior.
Yeah. Okay.
And you had to be an intern, be able to intern as well, yeah.
Sure, yeah, I just, yeah. Yes, sorry.
Motion by Bill, second by Christie, Christie, all in favor. I read remediation. It is recommended to avoid through the following individuals for the I read remediation. Amy Banks to work seven thirty to three each day for seven days. Pay per hourly rate. Kristen Bishop to work seven thirty to three each day for seven days. Pay per hourly rate. Shelley Ray as teaching assistant for I read remediation eight to two thirty each day for seven days. Pay per hourly rate. It's a mouthful. Yeah, sorry. Any motion? Chris, a motion by Christie, second by Bill, all in favor. Four zero one. Teaching assistant interns. It is recommended that the board approves the following. Adeline Kellums as a teaching assistant intern for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year up to five hours per week at a pay period of eleven dollars and seventy-five cents per hour. Izzy Ruthford as a teaching assistant intern for the fall for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year up to five hours per week at a pay period of eleven dollars and seventy-five cents per hour. Motion by Keith, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. N L C C agreement. It is recommended that the board approve the agreement with the North Lawrence Career Center for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
No changes to agree with him. It's just something we do annually. I send our kids up there to pursue vocational school. We'll just sign up for that.
Motion by Bill, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. O P A. It is recommended that the board approve the contract with O P A with food service management services.
There is a three point six percent increase over the last year because building to the original contract. We knew that they were going to do that. The state requires us to approve this annually. After five years, we have to put it out for a bit. We have the option every year to not go with O P A. But feel comfortable with the changes they made this year in the, like I said before, the supervisors they have. This is very good. Obviously, we're free underneath her and she's really grown as well. So I feel pretty good about our relationship with O P A right now.
When's the five years at?
This is our second year with O P A, so three more years after this.
Motion by Christie, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero.
Can I go there?
Yes. So, so. Sulliant Agreement. It is recommended that the board approve the agreement with Sulliant to provide deaf and hard hearing services for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
Sulliant is staff we gave to see where we've not been able to find. This is a pretty specialized service and we weren't able to find anybody locally that could do this in longer. So we use Sulliant this year and it was successful. So we'd like to use it again next year.
Is that a per service or is that a flat?
It's per hours billed, so.
Hours.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion by Christie, second by Bill, all in favor, five zero. Policy analytics proposal. It is recommended that the board approve the proposal from policy analytics to the amount of twenty thousand dollars for year-round analytical support to be paid from the first mortgage bond series twenty twenty-three.
No, I don't think so. I've presented this to you in the past and definitely would like to use this for this year to see what the changes in the legislative level are going to do with, to our, to our tax collection of property taxes and also have a look at what we do from a standpoint of the, just on a month-to-month basis. In the future, we probably will use a month-to-month basis service, but we may want to continue with the tax analysis possibly. It is something we can pay from the bond, so since we had that money issue, we'll try to do that.
Have we used something like this in the past?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, and you would anticipate this being a twenty thousand R, which is the premium service plan? But then you would anticipate going to the ten, I mean, it may not stay the same price, but to the lower plan ongoing?
That would be mine, either drop it altogether, but if we maintain it, I think we get a ten thousand R plan after this first year.
How would you measure whether it's effective or not?
It's a good question. I think we're just gonna have to judge the experience, how, what kind of information we get from it. Is it able to help us understand our finances a little bit better, able to help us make some better future predictions? You know, what we can do and those kind of things. Is it able to help us especially with the changes in the tax, way of doing property taxes? Is it able to help us understand what those changes are gonna do to our funding so we can make some better informed decisions?
And it's an annual thing, so if you do it the first year and you don't think it's of value to it, you dropped it.
Do you need the professional organization to provide any support in, in policy analytics anymore? School Board Association, Superintendents Association, I ask both.
When you, you talked about like corporation policy?
Well, it says policy.
Policy, well, policy analytics is the name of the company, but this is just looking at financials. You're not doing any kind of policy. To answer your question, the School Board Association does have a, a room that does a little bit of policy stuff.
Well, the reason it popped in my mind, I get the sense that those organizations, especially the School Board Association, does not do maybe what they did twenty years ago as far as providing guidance to you.
They, I would say the biggest benefit we give from our organization, whether it be the school or the association, the school business officials, the superintendents association, is they're pretty good by advocating on our behalf with the state legislature. They do really well, especially the directors of each of those have a good relationship with legislatures. I think they do well there. That's been the biggest benefit I see.
I appreciate you saying that because I, I don't know why, but I've developed the sense that I don't hear much from them. I don't hear much. I wonder if they're.
And that may be a little bit on me not reporting back, but I hear from some of that, you know? Because when I go to a superintendents meeting, well, the gentleman who's in charge of the Bob Tedder will tell you everything. This is what's coming down the pike as far as legislation goes. This is what they want to do. This is kind of where we're able to help land. So, yeah, they, that's to me the biggest benefit is they do bring each other lobbying on school corporations behalf. Do a good job. They don't provide a service like this that I'm aware of.
Do you know any of that's used then?
Brownstown uses them and they were the model that used the premium plan for a year. When they scale back and they continue to use that, the one that looks just at property taxes and those funds. And they have really good things to say about them. They were really good.
It says here that they would provide an update on revenue projections and everything three times a year. When would the first?
I'd have to, if we approve this, I have to talk to them and see when that, how much lead time they would need to look and dig into our numbers and dig into all that and see. So I don't have an answer for that yet.
But probably before we budget?
No, probably not before we budget. To be honest, this year, probably not. It's possible, but probably not because the budget process is gonna be starting and then we'll have that locked down by October. But, yeah, it's possible, yes.
Yeah, it's a different timeframe here.
Yeah, well, I guess, my, I guess what, probably not before we start the budget process and then before we make a conscious decision about the process.
Motion by Barry, second by Keith, all in favor, five zero. Para pro stipends is recommended that the board approve the stipends to pay to me now listed below. Be paid on par pro professionals grants funds and those are listed below. Motion by Christie, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. Quotes. It is recommended that the board approve the quote from Edron in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars to install additional intercom speakers in remodeled area of the Orleans Elementary School.
This is a couple areas we thought we had sufficient coverage for speakers, but turns out we don't. If we have emergency, we would need to lock it in whatever it is, just a day to day. We need that to work properly. On a side note, we can have some trouble with our intercom system. Mrs. Lori's reached out to them about getting somebody to turn it and fix that too, so. And they're usually pretty good about getting it turned out for themselves, so.
Is, is Edron who supports that system we have now?
They installed it and support it.
Out of curiosity, how many additional speakers is that for twenty-five hundred dollars?
I think that's two. No, it was more than that.
Four.
Four, believe it.
Okay.
And the wiring is, it tells with that as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then they'll test them to make sure that, yeah, yeah.
So the motions by Barry, second by Keith, all in favor. It is recommended that the board approve the quote from Edron in the amount of forty-six thousand four hundred two dollars fifty-three cents for updates in the intercom system at the Orleans Junior Senior High School.
This is something I think is long overdue. We've been having issues with our intercom system for the Junior Senior High School for years. We tried to patch, work it, make it, you know, make it work to try to save money, but this time it's end of its usable life. It has worked for most days, but it's difficult. It doesn't always work well. Usually give us a modern system that'll, that'll work and hopefully should last.
So is this a new system or is we just patching the old one?
This is a new system. They're gonna reuse what they can as far as speaker goes. I don't think they're using, using, reusing much. They'll get a new system.
So will they add a speaker to the weight room, for example?
That's not part of this quote now.
So, but we want to have a speaker in the weight room if there's students in there during emergency?
Once we get that finished, we're gonna add something in there. And I don't know, maybe we want to wait till we get finished and we have to, hopefully that, once they see exactly what it is, what needs to be done.
Okay. And where are those funds coming from? The forty-six thousand I said coming from my, I'll break it. I'll motion for that.
Motion by Bill, second by Christie, all in favor, five zero. It is recommended that the board approve the quote from athletic equipment sales in the amount, uh, amount of sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars for the replacement and installation of backstops and goals in the main gym at the Orleans Junior Senior High School to be paid from the first mortgage bond series twenty twenty-three.
We've approved several things that are coming out of the mortgage bond. Is there something that tells me how much money is in that? Is that on here?
Uh, I don't remember that.
Well, right now, it's one point, is that one point six? But that's before.
Oh, I see it on here now.
Like eleven thousand of the weight room taken off there. So after the weight room, it'd probably be a little under a million is what we have left.
Okay.
Right around there, though.
Any questions about this or?
This, does this include all goals?
This includes all six goals, replacing, when it says backstop, it's the system to list the goals up and adding, we'll replace all six of those, replace all six backboards. And then all six goals will be able to be raised or currently down with four side goals can be raised and which will be better for volleyball, obviously, and this will give us, you know, system. Hopefully the new ones will last as long as these ones last. They're currently there.
Is there any kind of warranty or maintenance agreement built into this?
Um, no maintenance agreement. I'd have to check on the warranty. However, this general consultant is the same gentleman who inspects them yearly. It's the same company that does that for us.
So you don't know if there's a warranty on the, the raising of that?
I would have to, I would have to double check that. I'll maybe know if it's for that.
I would hope that they'd have some warranty.
Yeah, I assume there are. I don't want to tell you this for sure without having looked at that.
Okay, well, if there's no warranty, that would be a problem.
It would be a problem.
Okay. So do, do we qualify this by voting on something that we don't know if has a warranty or not?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We can just change the motion to say pending proof of warranty.
Okay, then I would, I would approve that, yeah.
I guess my thought would be at least.
Well, it's got mechanical stuff in it. You've got to have some warranty in there. Yeah.
And once it works properly, then I understand.
Yeah, okay.
I could look and see if it has it on there correctly.
Oh, if you have it.
But if you want to improve warranty, you would want to put it in there, then.
We got that update and I'll make a motion.
I have it.
Motion by Bill, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. Superintendent's report.
All right. Graduation is Saturday, starts at one o'clock. You're on by ten if you're able to. I won't announce your names whenever it's my turn to speak. Looking forward to graduation. Have a good time. Weight room equipment, the weight room is progressing nicely, but Mason's on site this week. They weren't able to come today because of the rain, obviously, but they should be finished with their work middle of next week. I believe we're still on target to be finished by the end of July, but as we learn that, a project you never know for sure. As far as equipment goes, we've got three quotes for equipment and they decided that bigger than they like was the one that had the cheaper quote, but they felt the equipment was good. They're gonna bring that cells drip back, let him actually get eyes on the space and see it. And then after talking to a couple of the coaches in the weight room, P E teacher, we're gonna make some adjustments to that and we'll have a new quote hopefully by something to go around it. Either in June or July as far as equipment goes and there. Softball dugouts.
Can we go back to the weight room one second? Does the weight room, I know it has a separate heating and air. Does it have a water fountain in it? Does it have any plumbing in it?
No.
So we have a weight room with no water fountain, so they'd have to, kids in the weight room would have to go out into the gym to get to the water fountain? Okay.
Softball dugouts, we've gotten one quote for softball dugouts, but I believe multiple quotes for that cost. So we contacted other contractors, hopefully get initial quotes. When we do have those, we'll bring those back and the plan is hopefully have some of you guys can load on and approve at the, at the gym meeting. The big issue with them is obviously they're dated and upgrades needed, but it's the, is the drainage. And so there's some things we possibly could do for drainage in addition to dugouts and I'll contact Dory Services maybe or a contractor like that to see if they can give us some suggestions and see what we might do in addition to the dugouts, but that is the plan right now. Any questions about the dugouts or anything with that? Okay. Last minute, you guys asked me about athletic medical plan, so we put one together. This is just a draft. The idea was I had both school nurses, myself, the athletic director and the elementary athletic director and then Mrs. Salmon, who's a desert health services classes and also is a nurse and has experience as a trainer. And we just kind of, we prepared a draft, we got together, talked about it, and this is kind of where we landed. And this is kinda where we landed. I don't expect you guys to read this right now, um, but if you wanna take it home, uh, digest it. And uh, you know, we come back in June, we may have a more of a conversation about it, um, when we have a chance to really look at it. The um, the main things we were trying to do was, obviously, when we had athletes injured at contests, um, the idea was to have somebody at every um, high school JV and varsity contest. Um, to have somebody, a nurse or trainer or an ENT, whatever, wherever we land on that, to have them at every contest if possible. That was the goal. That doesn't mean anything for elementary, doesn't mean anything for junior high. Then I think it would be difficult to have somebody at every contest. And from talking to people that have trainers currently, they are just at the varsity contest, the JV varsity contest currently. If you guys want us to try to do that all, um, we certainly try. It might be a little bit about staffing that.
Um, when you say varsity JV, are you talking about all sports or just basketball?
All sports.
Okay.
All sports, um, which would be cross country, volleyball, and fall. And uh, I, when I say all sports, not golf, not necessarily golf and high school golf, but our girls' boys' golf, and boys' and girls' basketball in the winter, and track, and softball, baseball in the spring. Um, and we also put some stuff in here about training for coaches. And uh, wanna make sure that everyone's CPR certified, some basic first aid, um, AED certification. Um, and uh, how we handle things at ballgames. For example, uh, you're uh, uh, if we have blood on the floor, uh, using the kit that's provided to clean up blood, those type of things. And making sure that the person um, that is covered that night is uh, is wearing a shirt to identify as they was the next person by night, so everybody knows they were already letting the opposing coaches know, our coaches know, the people on the bench know that they were there, and where they were at. It just may make it a little more obvious to everybody, so. Try to put some things in there. Some of these things were off the IJSA website. One thing that they, that they suggest was we currently do physicals for seven to twelve. But we thought we gotta do physicals for five and six as well. So that's something you guys probably think about. We provide physicals for free for seven to twelve, so if you wanna do that, you can put the six there as well. And so, anyway, there's a lot in here, and there may be something that you guys are concerned about or that we feel like we need to add. So if they know, then at some point, we'll even decide if we feel like we wanna look at have a trainer, or if we just feel, as long as we have a medical professional, a nurse, an ENT, a paramedic, that's okay. So, um, I'll let you guys digest this, and then, so if you have questions, reach out, let me know. And then we can discuss again in June. What's your guys' questions then?
You, you had posted an opening for an athletic trainer, and I think you had one candidate at the last board reading. Has there been any update on that? I mean, anybody else apply or not, nothing? And, okay.
I, the only other thing I'd say is IU Health has a trainer list on their website as well, that they're at, of course, as well.
I'm sorry, they have what?
IU Health is listing for a trainer to work here as well, but they've not had anyone either.
Okay.
Um, they will, they do wanna partner with us and provide a trainer for cost, but they've not been able to.
Does that mean they shared the cost?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the cost would be, but yes, they would.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So Baptist hospital leases office, they do wanna do that too. They do that for availability, since it's a very big pattern, but.
Okay. But if they, if they shared the cost, they would help find somebody?
Yeah, they're trying to find somebody now.
To share the, I, I'm a little confused. There's, there's, there's us getting a trainer, there's them providing one.
Correct.
And then there's us jointly paying for one. Is that three options?
No, two options.
Okay.
One option is us hiring your own. The other option is us partnering with IU Health.
And that's where we split the costs.
Yeah, and they provide it. Now, most of that cost is gonna be, uh, they're gonna take care of the insurance liability.
Sure.
And we'll be paying hourly rate to train.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, the only other thing I had is, I believe I wanted to add, was um, trying to find more people that could sub in the nurse's office. Um, right now, we currently only hire LPNs and RNs to be subs for nurses. It's hard to find LPNs and RNs that would sub to be a nurse, uh, in a school setting. The nurses wanna know if we feel comfortable having certified nursing assistants being subs. We still have one nurse in the corporation here. But for example, if our elementary nurse was um, out, we probably some high, current, uh, high schoolers down there, because there's more volume of students coming to the nurse of the elementary. But up, up here, would it be okay if we hired a CNA, um, as a sub, if we could find one to kinda fill in with the stuff up here at the high school? Would you guys feel comfortable with that?
Would the only qualification be that they be, they have their CNA license?
That would be the only technical qualification. Other than we'd have to check references and hire. I'll, I'll, I'll say this, when we first hired a second nurse, we did have a CNA certification. And then we decided we wanted to do a nurse, who we found one that would work. But uh, but yes, it would be, that would be the only technical qualification, have a CNA. However, would they have to interview that and all that too? And if you guys wanna chew on that for a while, and think about it, and if you wanna bring back more information about that, I can, but uh, I still wanna bring it up to see if you guys are comfortable with that.
I don't know, I have, I have to think about that.
Okay. And I will say this too, for, for many, many years, um, we only had one nurse in the whole corporation. It's only the last four years, we went to two nurses. Um, so.
And that was prompted by this volume of work?
That was prompted a lot, COVID and the needs for COVID, and you know, yeah.
So if COVID hadn't happened, would we still just have one nurse?
Possibly.
Okay.
We got, we hired a second nurse, and she had a position, sometimes it's hard.
So they would just, and when you had this one nurse, they just go back and forth to another school?
She'd go back and forth to another schools. Most of the time, they were at the elementary. And then our high school staff would do the minor things like Band-Aids, Tylenol, those kind of minor medicines. If there was a big thing that the high school staff could handle, then they would bring that, the nurse up to the elementary school. And they, and she would check in, uh, daily. She'd come up and check in daily, but most of the time at the elementary school. Okay. Anything else? That's all I've got.
Okay, so we, yeah. Okay, so the I-Learn scores are coming back in. I think we have almost all of them included. So Mr. Ellis, myself, Mr. David, I will continue to look at those over the next um, month or so, and then I'll report back later in the summer once I have some better data to provide. Um, school committee, we've been working throughout the school year on collecting data, um, filling out reports, um, and documenting some things, and we're putting all that together in the home division. And then this summer, I think the entire admin team, they kinda work to align those and decide what, what steps we take to make sure that we're meeting those goals and are making progress on them. So I will give you the full report, um, either June or July, so you'll see. Uh, teachers last week worked on curriculum mapping with um, an individual named Jim McMillan, and he's with a company, it's Class. They've been around here a long time. When I was a teacher, we had the same individual come in and work with us. And I loved him personally. I mean, he was, he's very knowledgeable. He works with a lot of individuals in a lot of schools. Um, and so I've got a lot of good feedback. Um, he came in and he worked with our staff on aligning the curriculum, um, and pulling in these new I-Learn checkpoints that we're gonna be required to do this next year. Um, we also, they created a document that will be shared with um, parents that will kinda like what they're going to do each nine weeks and each semester. And so that way we had, we have a plan. Um, and then it aligns with the standards, and then the goal is to align, be aligned across the grade levels. So, and then the high school, I believe next fall, correct, they will be doing the same thing, so. Um, but we had a lot of good feedback. So we have several upcoming celebrations. We have the On My Way preschool graduation um, Friday at nine o'clock. Um, the sixth grade will be on Friday at one thirty. And then the kindergarten will be the next Tuesday at nine thirty. And then as soon as school's out, we will begin IRE remediation, and that will go through June sixth. And we will have um, students participate in two different groups, um, and then they will be tested as well. Any questions?
Good evening. Anybody in here suffer from insomnia?
All the time.
All right, well, if I got your cure. All right, um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to. What I, what I'm heating you right now is the uh, student handbook um, with some additions and edits. And myself, Mrs. Ralston, and Mr. Ellis have all been working on this. And um, so here's what I did, and I hope this is helpful for you. Uh, because here it is, you're welcome to read the entire item, and you're welcome to give me feedback or give us feedback on anything that you wanna give us feedback on. But if you really wanna be focused, if you open it up, you can see that there are, like, for instance, on page uh, four. On page four, can you see how that's highlighted? Um, and uh, so, for instance, we did not have an AI policy. Okay, this is, this would be a new addition. And, you know, for a lot of us, of course, you know, or I speak for myself, we certainly didn't worry about that when I was a kid or when we were writing papers. But this is something now that we have to be mindful of, because, you know, you can, you can fill ChatGPT to, you know, whatever you want at a writing paper. Um, so, uh, and then, for instance, like on page eight, and then I won't walk you through the whole thing, but, you know, we needed to have, we needed to shore some of these things up. Some of the items, we needed to make sure they reconciled. So if it was stated in one part of the handbook, it needed to be, it needed to be reconciled with another part of the handbook. Or, for instance, if it was in the handbook versus the athletic handbook, those things need to match. Um, so, you know, part of what we were trying to accomplish was to make things match, and also just to maybe provide some clarity, right? Like, for instance, um, can I put you on the spot?
Sure.
Okay, what's a certified absence? Your son's been here for twelve years. Yeah, you see what I mean? And so, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, but, you know, so here it goes. I mean, so when you're looking at, you know, maybe some of the stuff on attendance or whatever the case may be, you know, the reality is, there's information in there that needed to be, you know, needed to be easier to understand. Now, I will tell you with all due respect, what my goal was. My goal wasn't to necessarily shrink the size uh, of the handbook. The goal was to make it more um, uh, descriptive, you know, more clear. Yeah, to add quite a bit of clarity. So, so in my, uh, and also to give you a little bit of a heads up, if you look at my report here, number one, or number two, rather, um, I also listed the pages that if you'll take a look at those things, um, I would like for you to look, if you would, I would appreciate it, if you would look at the AI policy. Uh, I would like for you to look at makeup policy for work. I would like for you to look at the attendance policy. And then I would like for you to look at the substance abuse, random drug testing policy. I don't think it's any secret here, uh, amongst all of us, that that was something that we need to shore up a little bit. And, and you know, I will say this, and I know that you will realize that this is true. But I'll tell you when we're gonna find out whether or not we have good policy, and that's when we have to implement it, right? And then, once you start implementing it, if there's a hole somewhere, uh, you know, people will find that hole. So, um, so we're just trying to kinda shore things up a little bit. Any questions on that? Or any thoughts, or you're more than welcome, please, to give me feedback. And if you find a mistake, or if you find something, I mean, it could be something simple, but, you know, we want it to be, um, we want it to be as good as it can be, want it to make sense. We want people to be able to look at it and find the clarity that they need. And honestly, you know, there's a saying, you know, you've, you've heard that saying about good fences make good neighbors? Yeah, well, good policy makes it a heck of a lot easier to be an administrator. Um, and so, um, so we wanna make sure we shore our policy up as much as we can. Now, along that lines, the next item that I will be giving to you will be the athletic handbook. So the very next item that we'll pour through will be the athletic handbook, and then, and I envision making the athletic handbook kind of an addendum to the student parent handbook, so that they're all in one place. Uh, and we need to make sure that they match. Um, you know, we need to make sure that, that we're not sending conflicting messages or, or giving people erroneous information. Um, all right, um, we uh, we have our school improvement plan done. Um, but we will be going over that, uh, as administrators, we will be going over that, you know, um, and Mr. Ellis will be looking at it. We will give you more information about that later. Uh, we'll kinda give you a summary. I don't, you, I will give you the entire plan if you'd like, but once again, it's kinda like this book. It's a lot to read. So probably what we'll do is come to you and try to give you, you know, the pieces that we think you need to know, uh, or that you might be interested in. Uh, currently, myself and Mrs. Ralston, we are synthesizing our evaluations. We're meeting with teachers. Uh, and we are going over evaluations for next year. Um, now, I, I, I'm gonna run a couple of things past you, just for the heck of it, and just because I figure that anytime an administrator makes changes, um, you're liable to hear about some things. So, um, I have some changes that I will more than likely make for next year. And this may not be an exhaustive list, but these are a few things that I'm probably going to do. Um, I'm probably going to have middle schoolers eating in the cafeteria solely, okay? Uh, as long as we have the seating capacity, we're probably gonna eat in the cafeteria, you know, like we did when we were kids, right? And uh, there's a, there's a variety of reasons for that. I'll be happy to explain any of them, but um, number, or letter B, um.
So, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does that mean middle schools are eating like in the gym and stuff?
Right now, we have, yeah, we have middle schoolers eating in the gym, and we have some of them that eat in the cafeteria. And, and frankly, the middle schoolers, they don't handle it quite as well as the high schoolers. And, yeah, okay, all right. But if you have any questions, look me up. Um, cellphone holders. I was kinda ambivalent about that this year, whenever I first came here, because I've never used them before. But I think next year, we're gonna look at having our cellphone holders in each classroom. Uh, because I think it's gonna cut down on one item that I still find problematic. Um, and that is students asking to leave class, uh, so they can either, you know, go play on their phones or go to the bathroom and play on their phones. And uh, I think if we had them in cellphone holders, uh, I think it would cut down on some of that. I think the kids that are asking to use the bathroom would be kids that really do truly need to use the bathroom. Um, and I think it just takes a level of distraction out that we don't need. Um, finals, um, I, I, no more, I don't think, of this two out of three. Um, you know, we have a scenario right now where you could, here's, here's a possible scenario. You could have a D minus for the third nine weeks. You could do a final project. Now, this is, this is as it exists now. Okay, because there's, there's no rule now that says you have to have a cumulative final. And I think most of us in here, or at least, you know, we tend to think of finals as being cumulative for the, for the semester, right? So you could maybe do a final project, um, which would just kinda be the last project of the year. Well, what that means is, is that you could have a D minus, you could barely eke by on your final project and fail the fourth nine weeks and still pass the class. I don't think that represents a level of knowledge that we probably want. We probably want, uh, you know, a passing grade to reflect a certain amount of knowledge. So I think we need to do away with that. I think we need to go back to what's always been more classic, which is the third nine weeks is worth X amount, the fourth nine weeks is worth X amount, and your final's worth X amount. Um, I also don't think that we, um, and I know we might disagree on this point, and, and I understand that, but I don't think we have finals exemptions. I don't think that's really preparing our kids for college. Um, and uh, then on the, on the second page.
We have final exemptions now.
Yes.
Well, which constitute a final exemption.
Having a certain grade, um, which last year was a C, this year, I, I said it needed to be a B, which would show of average.
So if I have a B in a class, I don't have to take the finals, is that what you said?
At this juncture, if you're a senior and you had a B in class, you didn't have to take the final.
Okay. And you're going to do away with that?
I would like to do away with that. I don't think it's, I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's congruent until what they're gonna experience in college.
Sure. Agreed.
Yeah. Um, on the, on the second page here, graduation practice, man, they've gone well. We've got some great kids this year. Uh, I've enjoyed being around these seniors. They're good kids. Um, we uh, we've had multiple sessions in Bulldog Strong where we've celebrated achievement. Uh, I've been really pleased. Kate has really helped me with that. And we have really celebrated a lot this year for kids that don't, you know, for all sorts of things, and not just kids that have, you know, As in class. Uh, and then I've met with students, um, you know, I've had, I, if I hear of something that um I think we wanna stay away from, I'm pretty proactive about meeting with those kids, uh, because I would like to be, uh, I would like to be ahead of the game. So, so we had a little meeting this past week about, you know, driving our lawn hores and oil carts and tractors to school. All right, any questions for me, any concerns, anything you wanna know about us?
Um, I have a sort of a comment, I suppose, and a question. Something that I think would be interesting to hear from both of you, from the elementary and the high school perspective, would be, so we finished the year. What's been great about this year? What, what are, what, you, you talk about celebrating successes. What, what is our success this year? What, what can we celebrate from the high school and from the elementary? This should be something that maybe we could put in a paper and it's just sort of a, hey, we have good things going on here. And we get into some of the minutiae every week or every month of your report, but overall, what would you say has been the great things that have happened at the high school? And again, the same thing for the elementary, you could sort of bring that back with us next week, I think that would be great to celebrate that.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yep, no problem. That won't be hard.
Good, then that's even better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, guys.
Move on to late items. All right. Employment, it's recommended that the board approve the following sponsors for the high school um for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As you can see below, all of those are listed. Um, motion, Christie, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. Textbook adoption, it is recommended that the board approve the quotes below for the textbook adoption, H and H for the K three six math textbooks in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, forty-one cents. Um, is that safe?
SABIS.
SABIS for high school math textbooks in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-six cents. And SABIS for the seventh and eighth grade math textbooks in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars, seventy cents. And Cengage for the pre-capulus and calculus textbooks in the amount of five thousand, eighty-eight dollars, sixty cents. Goodheart, Will Cox Pulpitures for the agriculture textbooks in the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, sixty-six cents. Ag Ed Net, twenty-four month subscription in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Ag Ed Net, plant and soil curriculum in amount of eight hundred and fifty dollars and Ag Ed Net animal science curriculum in amount of eight hundred and fifty dollars. Motion by Christie, second by Bill, all in favor, five zero.
Hey, you mind if I say something right now?
Sure.
Well, so I just, I think uh, there are a lot of people in, believe it or not, in this list, and I think Joni would probably agree with me, that really kind of deserve a pat on the back. These guys spent quite a bit of time sitting in on, um, you know, sitting in on Zoom calls or, you know, phone calls or, 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 you know, correspondence back and forth and I really appreciated the effort that, and, and from all of them, but especially the math people, it was kind of a, it's kind of a process. And I think they, I think you can, I think, I think they did a good job and I think that uh, I think they'll end up utilizing and having a pretty good product for the kids, but and they deserve a pat on the back because I sit in on one Zoom call and the guy was really passionate about math and about, about twenty minutes into the call, I was zoned, I was in la la land. I didn't know what they were talking about.
Um, quote, it is recommended that the board approve the quote from Steve Queens in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the power washing at the Orleans Elementary School and Orleans Junior Senior High School. Um, motion by Barry, second by Keith, all in favor, um, five zero. It is recommended that the board approve the quote from Sweetwater in the amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, thirty cents for the sound equipment for the marching band and school use when needed to be paid from the first mark mortgage bond series twenty twenty-three. Um, motion by um Bill, um, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. It is recommended the board approve the quote from Visions Music in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars for a baritone saxophone to be used by the, as part of marching band. Um, motion by Keith, second by um Bill, all in favor, five zero. It is recommended that the board approve the quote from Lawn More Lawn Care and Landscape in the amount of four thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars for landscaping and tree removal at the Orleans Elementary School. Motion by Bill, second by Christie, all in favor, five zero. Invoice, it is recommended the board approve the May invoice from Site Logic in the amount of three thousand dollars to be paid from the first mortgage bond series twenty twenty-three. Motion by Christie, second by Bill, all in favor, five zero. Stiften, it is recommended that the board approve a five hundred dollar stipend for Amanda Tucker for the work completed as part of the computer science catalyst grant. Motion by Barry, second by Bill, all in favor, five zero. The Soliant Agreement, um, is recommended the board approve the agreement with Soliant to provide English language learner services for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-sixth um school year. Motion by um Christie, second by Keith, all in favor, five zero. Payment applications, it is recommended the board approve the payment applications listed below to be paid from the first mortgage bond series twenty twenty-three, cipher construction in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars for the work completed as part of the weight room project of the Orleans Junior Senior High School. ECS Southeast LLC in amount of three thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, twenty-two cents for the testing work completed as part of the weight room project at the Orleans Junior Senior High School. Motion by Barry, second by Keith, all in favor, five zero. Donation, it is recommended the board accept the following donation, seven dollars and sixty cents from the Casey's General Store to Orleans Elementary School to be used for the student account. Motion by Christie, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. Employment, it is recommended the board approve Macy Puckett as the English teacher at the Orleans Junior Senior High School for the twenty twenty-five school year, pending enrollment in the transitions of teaching program, in the transitions of teaching programs, salary and benefits for the master contract. Motion by Keith, second by Barry, all in favor, five zero. It is recommended that the meeting be adjourned at six twenty-nine PM. Motion by Barry, second by Keith, all in favor, five zero.